This is the Simmsary Board of Selectment Budget Workshop Regular Meeting for March 9th. And we always start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, do we have any public audience? No. Okay, so we have a, this is our first workshop, we have a full workshop, is this, we're televised,
Yes.
We have a full workshop all day on Saturday, we're gonna take care of some business tonight. And I just wanted to make up, before I turn over to Amy, we know we've heard from residents that they're facing tax increases, so you know, we're looking at a, maybe looking at a budget where we need to make some tough decisions on needs, and we'll be going through that and learning as we go through with all the departments. But with that, I'm gonna turn things over to Amy and Tom.
All right, so I'll walk you through the revenues slide, just to start you off. Next slide, thanks. So Maria presented her budget at the last meeting you all had. We had updated numbers from the grant list, the grant list has been finalized, so there's been a slight increase to the projected grant list numbers. We have an overall increase of about almost 27% to shy of that, and which equates to about $22.8 million in revenue. You can see that a lot of that is the real estate and the motor vehicle, so as you're well aware in your own personal lives, that we've seen a great market increase in vehicles and real estate coming out of COVID, there was a, there was a huge market boom. So during the revale this year, we were able to capture a lot of those revenue dollars associated with those market increases. If we did not have the revale, our new growth is just a little over $2 million or 2.45%. If we look at our certified grant list growth over 20 years without revaluations, it's an average increase of slightly over 1%. And then, Tom, if you just go to the next slide. There's a chart in here that shows our change in grant list over the last 20 years. The black boxes, little diamond boxes, represent our revale years. But as you can see with since, say, over the last six years, since our last revale, we had a change in value of 6.419, 0.82 and 20. And then we had some really good years recently, 21 at 2.66%, 22 at 2.93%, 23 at 3.72%. And then that 24 number is with the revale, the 26.95. And again, if we had taken out the revale, then our growth would only be about 2.45%, but definitely some strong growth over the last few years. The next slide on the median home value change. We took the medians since back to fiscal year 19. We looked at the medians, we looked at the mill rate, the taxes associated with them, and then the increases. So fiscal year 19 was a revale year, they saw, the median saw a tax decrease of about $500. And then in fiscal year 20, just going from the bottom to the top, there was about a $200 increase in taxes. 21, you can see a slight decrease of about $49. Fiscal year 22, back up to about $70. 23, 11. And then with the proposed town manager's budget and the new assessments of the median home value, you'll see that there's actually an anticipated tax increase of about $470 at a mill rate of 31.02. And then just a couple items of note, the aggregate increase in the median home taxes from fiscal year 19 to fiscal year 24, based on the town manager's proposed budget for fiscal year 24, is only a $200 increase to the taxpayers over the last six years. And then just a note at the bottom, the CPI for the Northeast region over the 12-month period is about 6%. And you can see our, Tom, you can see for fiscal year 24, the increase is slightly below that, about 5.6%. And then just a chart on the impact of our revaluation. So it has the home count and then the percent increase on the home value. So anything over, under $200,000 is just shy of a 30% increase. And I won't read them off to you, but you know, the 200, 300, 400, 500, 600,000 dollar ranges, all around that median increase of around 25, 28%. Over 600,000, we get to about 34%. And then if you wanted to get into, it's not on this chart, home values in excess of 800,000, then we start seeing market value increases anywhere from 40 to 60%. Any questions on revenues?
Just the only one, the assessors project and the additional 3 million is accounted for in the grand, are they a revaluation number?
Yep, they hit the 3 million target.
Okay, so, but that's part of the 26 in the revale, not part of the, obviously, the 2.45
Right.
New growth.
Amy, maybe as a, as a note, when this is all done, you don't need another side request from another committee member. If this is all done, that lasts, that impact to reevaluation, if somehow that could be blended with the five, what happened five years ago?
Sure.
So, so because I think that that conversation, for some people, that conversation will be interesting, you know, especially at the, the bottom, not the bottom end, but at the bottom of the slide, because that certainly, 180 degree reversal from that evaluation.
Right.
And really interesting, curious as to where, how, it's how close it's reset back to where it was.
It was, okay.
Purely educational, not for this budget, that's all.
We have it, yep.
Okay, so our first group that we have up is, we're getting into the general government departments, and we have our town clerk, Trish Monroe, and our two registrars are here.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
So, we will be looking at the town clerk budget for '23, '24. It's pretty straightforward, we are looking at a $268,000 proposed operating budget, which is a 7.18% increase, $17,962. That is reflecting the increase in the full-time salaries due to the step, step increases. Also, like pretty much every other department, we've seen a huge increase in the cost of our office supplies, mostly in our vital and land record binders and archival paper that we use for them, so those have been hit probably the hardest. I also failed to mention at the beginning, we are of three, we have three full-time employees in our department, we are fully staffed at the moment. So getting to the next item, which is that we will, as we do each year, apply for the Connecticut State Library Historic Documents Preservation Grant. The grant amount actually has increased since the last couple of years, which it used to be 7,500, it's gone up to 8,000. We're anticipating continuing a project that we started last year with the funds, which is to convert our vital record, our bound volumes, which are difficult to access to make certified copies. We are continuing on in having those unbound placed in archival binders and making them more easily accessible, and also just preserving the integrity of the copies that we have since their original records. So that we anticipate applying for shortly. That is pretty much all that's on the budget highlights. I am happy to answer any questions if you have specific questions as to other items in our department.
Trish, can you speak a little bit to the receipts? Because it does seem like there's been, there's an anticipation of conveyance receipts and recording fees decreasing.
Yeah.
So maybe you could just kind of explain that so that...
So, you know, we had been trending for the last couple of years up very significantly in our convey, our recordings, due to, you know, there were a lot of transactional situations with homes being conveyed, a lot of refinancing due to the low mortgage rates, those have been increasing, and so consequently, we have seen our recordings and conveyances go down significantly, and expect that to continue. I did kind of sort of do a quick look at where, how we're trending. So during last fiscal year, we took in about $150,000 in recording fees, $677,000 in conveyance tax. I projected out, we're eight months now into our current fiscal year, and the projection shows that we, in 12 months, would accomplish $94,000 for recordings and 580 for conveyance. So that total decrease for the two would be down about $160,000. So that's a, that's a big impact compared to where we've been the last few years, so that's, that's definitely stands out.
Trish, what, maybe you said this and my ADD was kicked in, I wasn't listening, which happened the other night, remember that? That was classic. What was, what drove the overtime two, a year and a half ago? What was that big bump?
Oh, the bump, so where we went from conveyances?
No, the overtime, so the, in the 22 actual, you have $3,400 of overtime, what drove that?
So let me just see if I can...
This is just historical, I'm trying to just under...
Yeah, you know, I would, I would have to see exactly what's in overtime.
You'd be, you'd guess.
We, so we didn't, we budget for a very small amount of overtime, which really covers our dog licensing season. When it comes to elections, due to the increase in absentee ballot processing, we've been able to get some extra help for that. We were supported by the Secretary of the State's Office giving grants out to each town to help us with the state election. So that grant was a little over $10,000, and we were able to use that to hire some extra workers, because we processed about more than 500 more ballots than we did in the last state election. So we went, that went to ballot processors, but that, you're probably thinking, Chris, that it came out of the grant money that we had, so we didn't dip into anything, we used funds that were given to us by the state. Any other questions?
Looks good.
All right, very good. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
When I can't answer Karen's, then vice versa, we go. You go first. So we can either talk about early voting now or save it till later, that's your choice. You want to do it first?
Yeah.
Get it out of the way. So as the slide says, there are three bills under consideration, and they range from as long as 18 days prior to each election to as few as 10, but nothing's shorter than that, inclusive of two weekends and 12-hour days roughly for that time, with the exception of two days, that will be like 16-hour days. So we're gonna have a lot of staffing coming out of that, the state is not talking to us about how that's gonna get funded, but there are requests at that state level that we get funding to help us through this. And Karen can probably talk through this better than I can, but I think they initially start funding and then we would have to pick it up at some point. So just to clarify, this is not just for elections, two out of the three bills have us doing this for both elections and primaries, the third bill has us also doing this for budget referenda, for the, either that swing between a 10 and 18-day period. We've also got some other funding issues that we're going to have in terms of, Susan had mentioned staffing, also space insecurity. And again, we don't know what that's gonna look like, or how much money we're gonna be receiving from the state to implement this. And one of the pushes from ROVAC, our professional organization, is that they really approve electronic poll books, which again, would be yet another expense on top of all of this, but if they want us to track everybody who is voting for 10 to 18 days prior to the election, and then be able to have accurate books on the day of the election, we need a better process than what we have. So there's a lot tied into all of this. The referenda, we are hope come out of all the bills, because as you all know, if a referendum goes down, you have two weeks to get it back up again, we could potentially run early voting for a month prior, like, it could just be ongoing. Which in 2024 is already gonna back into the presidential preference primaries. So there's a lot of concerns about that, and I, we, I've spoken with Melissa, Karen and I both submitted testimony, ROVAC, we're being, we're monitoring this as carefully as we can, but a lot of it's out of our hands.
And they think they're gonna have this up and running this year?
It is mandated for July 1st, they're all in agreement, July 1, 2023. That we're gonna be running this for the November election. All three bills say July 1. They don't want to test it in a presidential year.
That makes sense.
So it's going to, it's gonna be really interesting, because July 1, if we were to have a local primary for a municipal election, that's September 12th, so back that up, we're over Labor Day weekend. I mean, there's a lot of problems, there's a lot of problems. The Secretary of the State is advocating for shorter advance, maybe three days or five days for a municipal election, because the turnout is significantly lower. So that's why Karen and I think we need an elections castle. Because we, we look at the reality of it, every day we have to turn over any early voted ballot, and the bills all agree on this, to the, to the town clerk. So if we're doing that every day, ideally, we would almost want to be in this building, or we need a secure method of transport, potentially a police escort to go back and forth with ballots. And that's just another layer of expense and employees. So the thought is we would commandeer your main unit or whatever that period of time might be.
Will it work well for the...
Right, but that boots everybody to the library for potentially two weeks. So just another consideration as we roll through this.
And how does the absentee, you know, no fault, whatever?
No excuse absentee?
Like, how does that play into this?
Again, we're not sure. So we've been discussing with Trish earlier, does early voting reduce the number of absentee ballots that are issued? Do people want an absentee ballot so they can take it home with them and look at it or have it mailed to them? We really, we don't know. We're going to get started with this in November, and it's going to be an experiment on a grand scale.
Is, has there been any indication of like what securitization is at this level? No.
And the other piece, not to continue to muddy the waters, but there is also legislation that says, that is likely to pass, that will require us to remedy absentee ballots that are not completed correctly. So that is going to add another layer. Right now, it still says we would have to do that the morning of Election Day. So it really doesn't make sense, because if you voted by absentee, you're saying you're not here on Election Day. How are you coming to Town Hall to remedy your absentee ballot? So there are some problems with the legislation.
Shocking.
But it's most likely going to cause us to have to, and the town clerk, to have to remedy absentee ballots in the mix with putting in early voting and EDR voting. And so, so it's just, it's, it's kind of exploding, and we don't know what that looks like just yet.
So that, I know you, there's a, you're like asking for $25,000, that's...
So we, in discussions with Amy and Maria, the thought was put a placeholder in, because we just didn't know, and we still, unfortunately, we still don't know. And none of, none of the three proposals that are before the legislature at this point have a dollar amount fixed to them or any mention of funding.
That's purely, I mean, that's, I mean, not to, you know, to...
It's a pie in the sky number.
That's just, okay, all right. There's no science whatsoever about it.
Absolutely. What we did do, I will tell you, what we did do, how we sort of came up with that, is Karen and I made the assumption that we would not be running the tabulators for this, because that would really add another wrinkle. So we modeled it on EDR voting, so we just did personnel, and that's $2,200 a day. So there is a little science to it, because that's the only science we could put to it. We don't know if the state's supplying us with envelopes, we don't know how, can we use the AB ballots, or do we have to have separate ballots? So we just don't know. We don't know if we have to have the memory cards programmed for four different ballot types instead of three, it's just... There's, there's a lot of unknowns, and so the thought was if it's gonna cost us $2,200 a day, when we had our budget meetings, we were told that it was gonna be seven days, and then the secretary expanded her bill to 10, and then the legislature expanded it to 18. So we don't...
Where is the 25? Why is it not in the election admin budget?
So if the state funds it, we don't need it.
I might win the lottery, but it's not likely. I'm just thinking, because if it's gonna be an ongoing appropriation...
Which we don't know either.
So we'll figure, basically, so we're gonna, we're gonna leave it in contention to this year, but next year, we'll put it in election admin, once we have a better number. Okay, but we're not gonna have to go get flogged by the Board of Finance for that? All right.
Yeah, I couldn't find the number, it's like, where is it?
Okay, all right, so the rest of our budget's really easy. As you know, the functions of our department are statutorily driven, so numbers that we presented are simply our expenses to comply with the law. Municipal years, we have lower budgets because turnout is less, so we print less ballots. We generally have an easy, it just, that kind of filters down throughout the budget, so it's a smaller budget this year for us.
Is your time built in, though? Is that why the increase in the registrar's number, or is your time in the 25?
The increase in the registrar's number is the raise you authorized for us last year.
That's the raise, but, but there, is there additional time for you guys in the 25?
We don't know yet. We don't, because we don't know what will, we know that we will, one, one or both, one or, one of us or our deputies will have to be present every day, but we don't know how many days, so we didn't...
I want to ask the question a different way, is that 2,100 number include you guys? Or is that just the part-time staff you'd bring in?
That's just part-time staff. That's election day staff.
So the 21 is already light, because somebody at a higher pay grade is gonna have to be part of that.
Right. So we've always, Karen and I have always absorbed the elections as part of our salary, but this is grossly changing the nature of our job. So...
So, so, okay, so that's different, so you guys are not hourly, your salary, so...
You can't change our salary, except for at the beginning or the middle of our terms. So Karen and I will probably, depending on how it goes, we will, we will assume one of the roles, whether it's the moderator's role or the assistant registrar's roles, and, and pay ourselves that way. So it's, it's not an additional expense on top of what you're saying.
It is in the 2,100, then.
Oh, yeah, sorry, that way, in that sense, yes, it is.
Yeah, I asked the question poorly, so there's not an increase for you as the registrar in that, because your salary is fixed, but if you play the role of moderator, you would collect under the 2,100.
Yes, exactly.
That makes sense, sorry, I didn't ask it the right way.
No, I think, yeah.
No, you, you're, you're right on, I asked it, I asked it the wrong way.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep, yep. So...
And then we would have to look in the future, how do we fund it, based on what your role is in the future, and take that into account in future salary increases potentially, or does that, assuming another role, make sense?
Right.
It's basically what we'd be looking for.
Right.
Okay.
All right, any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Okay. Next up, we have our IT department, we have Rick Bazzano here.
Hey, folks. I'd just like to say thank you to Maria, Amy, and Melissa for helping me put this budget package together, and really, what you're gonna see in front of you is pretty much critical what we need, and then the rest we pushed off. And as well as for the Board of Selectment, Board of Finance, over the last couple of years, you've been very nice to the IT department, we had a couple of holes, and we patched them up, so I appreciate your efforts. On the first slide, you see the increase pretty much salaries right there for the operating budget. The contractual services, I don't know if you have the breakdown in there, but we're pushing more and more to support services hosted, and that includes 365 environment, spam filtering, antivirus services, subscriptions as well, that's a big part of it. And also the, another big piece is with the appropriation we had last year for endpoint solution, that has hit our budget now for operating expense as well. Any questions on that? I don't want to talk, you know, too high where you're not getting where these expenses are coming from.
Just on the contractual, any additional recommendations coming out of the tech task force from, you know, the protection standpoint?
The only thing is that the, for the assessment, for the cybersecurity assessment that we're gonna be having.
And potentially, there'll be additional software contractual services that would come out of that.
We have some funding now for that, Sean, and I think we have it going out, a couple of years out, too, as well.
Yeah.
And I think that falls into the finance assessment as well.
Yeah, so that's, so that's the assessment piece, and then presumably, once we get that assessment back, there will be recommendations?
For sure.
Okay, but that's, that's in future.
We just had, just to give you a little caveat, we did have the state cybersecurity team here last week, they spent the day with us, and I'm sure we're gonna get some, you know, assessment results back from them that we'll have to act on. We didn't do too, not, I shouldn't say that, we didn't do too bad, actually, from where we are, because we were patching up those holes with some of the appropriations we had over the last two years, so now it's good.
Yeah, I know you guys have done a lot of work in that space.
Rick, how many, just, how many vendors do you guys deal with, you know, for the services? Is that a curiosity?
Two.
Okay.
Two, yeah, we're not pretty...
They handle everything?
Yeah, the rest of it, since we pushed everything to the host, I mean, if you want to count those vendors as well, but they're pretty much subscription-based.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's the big thing, too, what we're gonna see in the next couple of years, is everything's going subscription, and all these guys are just gonna kill us that way.
Yep, into my business.
I mean, I can't say kill it, because everything's increasing, but that's where we, that's where we're gonna see. We get in, we try to stay with our, our federal government, the homeland security governments on our solutions, but they, you know, their, their vendors that they contract with, they're still increasing their pricing, so...
One question on the IT specialist from, that was last year, right? We have one now?
Yes, we do.
Okay, thank you.
And coming in on Monday at 7:30. Yeah, so we're really happy with that, because with just two folks right now in IT, and if you ever looked at our dashboard of what we're doing, it just gives us another body to put in front of a pain and, you know, monitor 365, monitor our endpoint solutions and things like that.
You sold it last year, you don't need to say.
Yeah, I mean, it's great, but it's great to have another body, it's gonna be so different, you know?
So they're starting on Monday?
Yeah, the guy, you had someone that quit, right?
Yeah.
You had somebody that left.
Oh, so there was, that's right, so there was, because I was gonna ask about why is the, why is the budget and the estimate the same?
Yeah.
So, quick question, just, well, I'll wait till you're finished.
Okay. Next slide. So our CNR projects that we have, that we kind of like brought some to the, the front of the table, and the rest we, we pushed away. The staff, computer replacements is our, I think we're in our third year, we still projected out further, we're in good shape. I could see that in the next two years out, that we could probably reduce that number a little bit, but for this year, that number is good for us to finish recycling some of the hardware that we have. The switches, it's a, it's a big number, but it's really the most critical of, of these three that are coming down right now. This is for our infrastructure that's in Town Hall, including law enforcement, as well as the infrastructure of our remote sites, because we're all tied with our town fiber that we have, so we have electronic equipment that's out there as well. So this covers all that, and that's kind of like working with our partner that we have, that's, that's a good number to have, it's, it's crazy what they're getting for network switches and whatnot, but 42,000 with the engineers that we have onboard, that we could do it. So that's really mission critical. Another thing that came up a couple of times in, in the previous departments, is everything's about infrastructure, right? So this is what's running our infrastructure, are these switches, okay? So if the, so if the registrar comes into this office, they're gonna need Wi-Fi, they're gonna need equipment that we support, like on the whim. So this new equipment makes everything a lot more faster for them, you know, because right now, this equipment that we have is probably 2008, 2009 that we have.
Wasn't there a problem with some switches?
Mm-hmm, good memory.
Yeah.
Good memory, so I had to react quick, and I actually used the, some of the computer replacement money we had, because now we had no spare switches, which were hot backups.
Right, right.
So we had to buy a couple spares, just that, just in case something happens.
Right, so this is something that really needs to be done.
And then that, that next one, the 35, which is a bigger number, is a big number as well, just like last night, I got alerted at 1 o'clock in the morning that one of our servers was losing its storage. And with the revale, and what the application vendor was doing at the time was creating backups, and it was not clearing all these backups and redundant data, so it was just squeezing the server further and further down. The last projection that we have, we have five... The last projection that we have, we have five to seven percent of our storage left that was bought three years ago, and it's actually on a five-to-seven-year cycle, so now we're all of a sudden, we're close to that cycle to happen.
You mean you're halfway through?
Yeah.
The contract, and you're almost used up all your bandwidth.
Right, all the storage on it, Chris.
Yeah. Capacity, yeah.
So this piece of software right here, not to get, uh, vendor-centric, is that it gives us the opportunity to get rid of some static data that in storage that's on our servers, and port it off to this appliance, it also gives us a virtual environment that we could use for another secured spot to put some financial information and things like that. The vendor we have is proven by DHS, and FBI, and CIA, and all those guys, but it gives us, there's a multiple purpose in that piece of software, it's not just storage to dump data at, and if you want to talk about it on the side, I'm more than willing to, as well.
Have we addressed our, our, um, data retention policies in light of that as well?
Yeah.
Okay.
So really, in our, our departments are pretty good, um, they clean up, they clean up their stuff, no.
Okay.
Which really, which really got killed on is law enforcement right now.
Yeah.
There, there's an uptick in their activity, so they store a lot on our, that's just not data, but it's videos and everything else, their body cams and whatnot, uh, we made a good move with, uh, with the chief, where we port those off, uh, to the cloud. But everything that's local, where they're having local cases and files and things like that, that's stored on our servers.
Amy, is there an opportunity to look at the, um, uh, private duty fund for some of the funding for that, in light of it's heavily police need?
So the private duty gets closed out every year?
Yeah. I've got a reserve, yeah. But we still keep, we. Yeah.
Break it down to see how much is left in there?
No, I'm just, I mean, I know we're, you probably have some of it allocated out of there, right, for some of the police stuff?
We did, there was a portion left. Is that what you're asking that dollar about?
Not now, I'm just thinking when we get down to the end and we start prioritizing projects and funds and everything else, if there's, you know, fifteen of it came out, I'm making up a number, fifteen came out of it there, does that make sense, given it's? Yeah, we don't need it now, but that, that'll help, I think, putting a whole piece of the puzzle together.
In that, in that last piece of the C and R, um, for the security infrastructure, again, it's all, it's all security, and, uh, with a couple, couple of instances that it has occurred, uh, there's an urgent need to update the DVR, uh, server, which is that nine thousand, uh, in that location. Um, and that goes back to retention, um, we had put newer cameras, newer technology, infrared cameras out there to protect these facilities for the town, and, you know, people are there almost twenty-four-seven, so that means a camera's gonna be clicked on more and more, it just eats away at the server more and more. So our retention period went from like thirty, thirty-five days, and went to now fifteen, seventeen days. And sometimes some of those instances don't come up rather quickly, um, we get the requests from law enforcement, and, you know, sometimes we hit it, and sometimes we don't. And you also see pushed out on the C and R project for other, um, security camera infrastructure and equipment. Uh, right now, our, our design is pretty much decentralized, um, I have it where, um, I'm trying to bring everything back to Town Hall in one server, one DVR, that's controlled by the people who are involved, is the law enforcement. And that's all I have. Questions, Chris?
Yeah, so, um, I'm glad that, I mean, like Wendy was nodding along when you were talking, you're going through your, your IT hieroglyphic speak, which I completely lost, like, she's like, at least somebody up here, I'm sure. But two, a couple of years ago, we had, we had a big investment in phone systems, correct? Did we do something with phone?
That was an upgrade of the VoIP system, yep.
Yeah, that was a big, to, to, to modernize it, whichever, and then we did some, we did a major software or contract with cyber, right, we had to do some improvements to cybersecurity.
Yep.
Right, didn't we do that, okay?
And that, that hit, the last part of that hit this.
This year.
Yeah.
So if you look at, you know, just again, forward thinking, two years, or five years, when are you gonna, what, when are we gonna be like investing in? When's gonna be some big, huge IT ask, like, a cone of silence being installed over this building, or, you know, a bunker, you know, like, what's the big thing coming? Because I see these, this is all nibbling around the edges increases here, and you're gonna hiss with something big soon, I know it. So we're feeling pretty good about everything?
That's what I'm saying, over the last several years.
All the upgrades you've made.
We've just been doing the increments, I mean, the last, I think the last six-digit number that I asked for appropriation from, from the Board of Selectmen to Board of Finance was the, the storage piece of it.
Okay.
Which was three and a half years ago, which we're pretty much seeing that.
And computers, we had, we did a big, we did a big clean out of the.
Yeah.
Hardware.
But that, that was.
Transition, okay, all right, you heard it here.
Last five years, that's the big summer.
What about our, um, our cybersecurity requirements for the insurance coverage?
Yeah, so, I mean, that's what's been pushing us, so we're, we're implementing it in a piece by piece.
To respond to the requirements of the policy.
Right.
Expectation of the policy, yeah.
And they're, they're driving us, really.
But I don't think we're done, right? Is there anything?
No, no, there is, there's one other piece that we need, but that's not gonna be a six-digit number.
Okay, just here, okay, thank you.
And if it does, you have coffee, breakfast for a month.
Scones. Irish soda bread, which they have across to the pa, uh, pop over right now, oh my gosh, it's kryptonite.
It will affect the whole board, it won't just be you. No, but I feel confident about Chris.
Thank you.
And Pia?
Thanks, Rick.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rick. Kelsey, um, did you guys clean your outfit?
We did.
Yeah.
That had to happen.
We're on the same wavelength, but not that much. His pink blazer's getting dry cleaned.
Maybe they'll let you into the club, Tom.
Hi, everyone, I think I've met everyone, if not, I'm Kelsey Chamberlain, I'm the finance director, or deputy finance director, I am not the finance director. That's all, Amy. Alright, so for our fiscal year twenty-four budget, um, as you can see, we are requesting just over one point two million dollars, but this is also for the finance department, tax assessors, and Board of Finance. For the finance department, there is a significant increase, but that is because we are taking on a new position, which was previously held by the Board of Education, um, there was a retirement this year, so, um, we are following along with the shared positions with the shared services, and, um, we are having this position be primarily based on the town side, and it's gonna be about like a seventy-thirty split with Board of Ed. For the assessor's office, there's also a about twenty-seven thousand dollar increase there, and this is just a true-up of the property appraiser position, which was implemented last year, and, um, for the new assessor's aide as well. And for the Board of Finance, the increase for this is mostly based off of the audit, um, which we will be having done, obviously, for fiscal year twenty-four. Any questions on that?
Is that increasing scope, or is that just because the, the service itself just costs more?
Um.
Anyone outside?
I think it's because the services are just more, just like everything else nowadays.
I have a question, with the, um, new budget director position.
Yep.
Because the, some of that position, um, was served by the assistant town manager. I'm just curious, will there be any change in the assistant town manager role, no longer having, um, the budget aspect? Will there be any changes in salary or job description with that, and with, like, how will the budget part of it, how will that time be filled?
Um, I can't speak to that.
Maria answered that question at one of our meetings, um, I think Chris asked that question, and some of the roles of the dep, you're talking about the deputy town manager, right?
Yeah.
Was gonna take on more of a personnel and IT leadership role, that was what I heard, um, in that meeting. I, I was gonna just ask on the budget director, how does that, if it's, I, I don't remember how the shared services work, right? So we have it in our budget, does Board of Ed pay us, right?
Transfer.
Yeah, okay, and I think Maria said there's, it's a wash, like, there's no real increase in cost, because, um.
Right, so they were paying for certain services, um, based on the agreement that we had, we took a relook during this budget process, and we put all of the shared positions together.
Okay.
And we did a relook at how much it should cost, and what they were paying was in line, um, I think it increased slightly.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
And for our C and R project for this year, um, it kind of also aligns with the IT department, too. We are looking at doing a fraud risk assessment, and this would be beneficial for the town, um, we can pinpoint certain areas within the finance department, or just overall town-wide, um, where we can, where we can better, where we can implement like better practices, and, um, just make sure that we're in line with our protocol.
Did that come out of the, for, uh, the audit that we just did, or is that, no, okay?
I've been on there as a recommendation for years.
Okay.
Okay, this is a big effort for your department, right?
So this is going to be a town-wide project, it's going to every single department.
Right.
Wow.
Oh, wow.
Likely one of the answers is gonna be, we need more segregation of duties, right, and that's because of staffing, so, often, small towns get that in both audits and financial fraud risk assessments, right, because when you have less people, there's less opportunities for segregation, right?
Right, um, so right now, we do have small departments that have segregation, I don't see it's an issue, but we make sure that there's more than one person looking at everything.
No, not implying that we're, we're necessarily at risk, but it is a challenge, right, with that?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
No, when somebody's out on vacation, it's hard, right? Is it, is that a different firm than we?
We go out for RFP.
Would we not, I, I, I assume we would use somebody that's not our auditor?
Um, it's a completely different department, so there is no, um.
I agree, but from a, from a conflict standpoint, they wouldn't want to call out their own firm for missing something in an audit, right?
But that's not what an audit looks for, I mean, an audit is to make sure the financial statements are not clearly stated, and not to.
They also do testing.
Right, they do testing, but it's not to detect.
They look at internal controls, but they don't do an in-depth analysis of our progress assessment, and the engagement letters specifically states that not be provided.
That would be uncomfortable. We heard the same firm, but we can talk about that when the RFP comes in.
Can you see the response?
Yeah.
Right now, there's nobody using the response that I was asking.
Any, any other questions?
I, I just want to applaud you with your, uh, the first six months of the year, your office supply use is way down.
We're trying very hard.
You just chew more pencils during budget season, is that what it is, is that what goes up?
It's in the cloud, it's in that storage.
Okay, alright, because keep that trend going, you can start saving some money here, guys, alright?
I have a question, um, with completing the grant list, um, I know the due date is usually, is always January thirty-first, the last couple of years, it's, with this year, obviously, a rebuild that happened, but, um, I believe the year before, it came in a little late as well, and I'm just curious, oh, it didn't, because I was seeing this. Oh, okay, because I was going to say, thinking that, is there anything you guys need on your side to?
Last year was the first year.
Help make that happen, okay, great, and then?
Last year was the first year in twelve years that it came in on time. Sorry, you're right, under Francine is the only time it's ever come in on time, and the prior assessor, we were always on a full extension. We, the Board of Finance never got the grant list until March, under prior, under the prior finance departments. So it's not abnormal to get an extension, is what I'm trying to say.
And then, just, um, under revenues, the charges for services for Board of Ed, is that just the transfer with the budget director position that caused that big increase? Okay. Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Town manager's office, general government. And legal.
Yeah.
Tab.
Actually, I had one, going back, sorry, one more on, we only, we're only projecting a twenty thousand increase in interest?
So, as of right now, we ask, we're putting a lot of that as a part of our budget.
We've got like thirty-five million in cash all over throughout the year, right?
Right, but it's also a balance that we're making, yeah.
Yeah, but, I mean, is there an opportunity to ladder CDs and such?
So, yes, there is, um, but with Latimer coming up, I'm not comfortable putting our money in CDs quite yet, um, because I might need it for cash flow.
Alright, I mean, in prior, in, back in the day when interest, I mean, we used to bring in a million dollars in investment income, or interest income.
I haven't seen that since.
No, I mean, not at six, I mean, when interest rates are creeping back up, we're getting back to that territory, so.
We'll take a look, um, especially since the interest rates are creeping back up, but, um, it's not gonna be.
I'm not talking about the eighties. I'm not talking about the eighties.
I mean, it hasn't been in a very long time, that I know.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright. Yeah, Tom Andrew.
So our budget highlights, um, small increase of twenty-four hundred dollars. In the Tom Andrew's office, um, mostly due to full-time salaries. Our general government, uh, budget, uh, actually a decrease of a thousand, um, it works out from a twenty-five hundred dollar decrease in our copy and print, after looking at historical trends, about fifteen hundred dollar increase, uh, due to anticipated increase in cost of postage. Probably will go up even more, so we factored that in for that. General government budget includes tuition reimbursement funds for employees, excluding police officers, our copy and print funds, as mentioned, telephone service funds, um, our organization-wide, uh, training, professional development, and then postage, except for special revenue and dozens of C. Our community services budget, uh, slight increase of about thirty-six hundred dollars, um, mainly due to adding the budget mailer cost into the budget, and then small per capita increases in our public agency support, um, in the, um, in the outside like agency grants, so that's the per capita increases. And then, you know, looking at the other ones later in your budget, um, process, I believe on Saturday. This fund's kind of our BLS clerk, and other boarding committee clerks, um, membership dues, um, outside agency grants, as mentioned, and any legal notices that we might have to do for public hearings, ordinances, um, the budget, and, um, other ones that might pop up throughout the year. I guess, any questions there?
Well, yeah, I'm just gonna acknowledge you guys, which is nice to have the new line item for Board of Selectmen, members who want to attend the conference.
Yes.
We added, uh, we added that, uh, just, we had different ones that come in, um, especially kind of looking at CCM, we had some members go this year, so we added it in a little, um, fund for members to go.
That's great. I think that's good, maybe people will go.
So our outside agency support, um, that's the yearly kind of announcement we make for, um, agencies to kind of submit an application, um, their grants, they're not budgeted through community and social services, um, you see the increases for our Farmington River watershed, North Central EMS, Greater Hartford Transit District, and Amplify, and those are those increases that we talked about in the per capita fee. And then we did have two new requests, um, and requested increases, and those we'll review on during the Saturday policy discussion section. But you can take a look at them in your budget pages now.
And the, um, uh, the Equity Council grant, it came in as public agency, ended up where?
Write that down and get back to you.
Alright, yeah, because they submitted that as an outside agency grant this year to un, unbundle it from the social services budget, I thought.
You shut up the DEI money?
Yeah, yeah, the Equity Council money came in as part of the agency grant, yeah. Yeah, yeah, the Equity Council money came in as part of the agency grant, yeah. Okay. Sorry, I just remembered that I should ask that ahead of time.
Health, the Farmington Valley Health District, per capita assessment remained flat. It's a slight increase just due to our population increase. Insurance, small increase, $6,700. That includes our LAP and workers' comp, cyber, a whole bunch of different insurances. Do you have any questions on those? I can write them down, but we'd have to get back to you on that.
Have we committed the actual science to memory talk? Amy, are those good numbers yet on the insurance fund? Okay. So we're not gonna get hit in April with a, oh, by the way, it's 10% more. But, I mean, based on what we know now, so, okay. Yeah, no, that's fair.
Health insurance fund, much improved, stable position. We're projected to be at about 21% of expected claims for the fiscal year. It's kind of important to maintain our reserves of at least 25% of expected claims. Could be a potential one-time contribution to the reserve if needed at year end. And we had a small decrease due to the pandemic environment. People put off going to end-of-care and elective procedures at the start of the pandemic, but you're starting to see kind of a return to normal, and even a catch-up of people missing appointments and scheduling more than they normally might.
Tom?
Yes?
Somewhere, there was a contribution to the health fund. Where, do you know where that was shown?
Prior years, like, a couple of years back or in this year?
She's got a placeholder. Suggesting a contribution to the health fund?
Oh, the ARPA table has like a.
I think it's a $611,000.
Yeah.
How much was it?
$611,000.
Yeah, that's what I thought. So that's, yeah, I was just curious as to what and why.
That's part of getting the plan back up to 25%.
Okay.
21 is lower than the recommended number. The town manager and finance director, right, have recommended 25% based on best.
And that's this.
Yeah, I think it's just a contingency in case we need it, so if things don't go according to the budget, we have below that 20%, 20% of expected claims. We have some additional funding from the ARPA money that we can put back into the reserve if we need to.
And that's the, and that bullet point right there, the potential one-time contribution to the reserve if needed at year end.
So we could also use like capital reserves for that, too. I mean, same money, like, if we use money. You know, it's all the same, right? We have to kind of try to look at that, but, okay.
Employee benefits, $33,000 increase. Our interest rate assumption remains unchanged at 6.5%. But our town, general government, and Board of Ed hope had plans are fully funded.
Can you explain, this is on the employee benefits, just the increase on a major medical?
Is that today? I can write that down and get back.
Oh, yeah, well, I just saw, I'm in tab 17, right, and I just saw change from 23 to 24 was $472,000.
So last year, we had a proposed increase from our benefits advisors, I believe it's 9%. And then, all of us decided to take a zero to keep the budgets low last year, so we did not have an increase in that line item.
Okay.
So this year, our benefit advisor, we created a clip. This year, our benefits advisors came back to us and said that our percentage increase should be around 10%. So the clip from last year of 9% plus the expected increase this year of 10% is about, you know, 19%. We did a 15% increase, retaining a little bit of a gamble if we have to utilize those reserves, which is why we have that assignment from the arranger of the ARPA funding in case our gamble doesn't win.
Okay, thanks.
So that's, that's all spelled out right on tab 24, Amy, right? Because it shows the premium. We only took in, or we projected to take in 15.2, but we paid out seven, and with 16.7, we paid out 17.9, so we think we're upside down by a million, too, right?
Right, and that was on plan to start the budget.
Right. Had we done the original number, that upside down would have been a lower number, right? So now we're catching up.
Right.
So we're basically netting it out to that, that's for that $80,000, basically at zero, right? On the premium side, 18.8 to 18.9.
Right, so we're trying to get that back to, just in that revenue.
And we can, I mean, again, last year, we all made a policy decision to go a little bit lower, right?
Exactly.
But we don't, the recommendation right now is not to make that same policy decision again and go lower.
Exactly.
To get back to the zero, so we have to pay, we have to pay for the increase.
Otherwise, it just eat into the fund balance.
Correct, which is what got us upside down in the first place.
Right, right.
So we all worked really hard over the last few years to get it back up, so. Tom, can you go back? Something caught my attention. The slide said we don't have stop loss, but we do.
Yeah, we do.
Yeah. I thought it said we don't have stop loss.
I think the slide does say, like, major, is it major medical stop loss?
Aggregates stop loss.
Oh, oh, so, so like on individual claims, but you're saying you don't have it on the aggregate?
Yeah, okay, alright. I was like, wait a minute, we do, I mean, we don't have stop loss? What, are we out of our mind? Thank you.
CNR budgets. We read all the words. So charter revision, charter mandated once every at least seven years, or every seven years. Last time was 2016, so this is a amount to be used to kind of go over that process. Includes clerk fees, kind of attorney fees, and stuff like that. The employee satisfaction survey was a BOS goal for your 2021, 2023 term, so putting that in through this process. And the town tourism map is a partnership between the Chamber of Commerce and the EDC. It was a suggestion from our former tourism committee, and it is also a common request when people come to the visitor center saying, oh, do you have a map of town? We also get them sometimes here in town hall, not as frequent, but we have had people ask if we have a map, which I believe we actually ran out of, but they were pretty old. So it's a four-year project and suggested using ARPA funds for that.
We're gonna talk about that more in detail, I think, rightly.
Yeah.
Yeah, we wanna, I do, too. Breakdowns and stuff like that.
I have a question from an earlier slide. Under the Board of Selectmen, Community Services, the budget mailer. If I recall correctly, I thought we had, when the state recs came in, there was a proposed bill for the budget mailers to go electronic. And if that happens, I'm just wondering what sort of anticipated savings we would have from something like that.
Yeah, I think we put about $1,400 into the fund, so if it goes electronic, you would see that savings from that. The budget mailer, we do, the, it would not affect the legal notice in the current. The budget mailer is the one that we mail out to all the homes in town.
Okay.
So that would be probably about $1,400.
I think there is a bill to get rid of the legal notices in the current, too, though.
I wonder.
That's failed.
We'd have savings if that happens. That's built into your just regular BOS, same thing, we have a advertising line item. And that's what we use for like all the other legal notices.
Yeah. They've been trying for years to pass that, though. That's the only thing keeping the Hartford current alive, so.
That's the end of the CNR. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
You guys were all thinking it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
We don't talk about probate. None.
Are they like Bruno?
There was like nothing in there, wasn't it? I guess not much to talk about.
We're obligated, so.
Okay, community development. Life is moving along.
Well, thanks for having me tonight.
Thanks for being here.
It's good to be seen. Yeah, so this is, I guess this is my first budget for you. Ten months in, but, so it's a, you know, it's a fairly lean and fairly simple budget, it's a standard department budget. You see essentially some increases really related to, you know, general wage and those kinds of things. And I did, I did wanna just make, make one note, just in terms of my, my approach to budget, even though, you know, it's a standard, a small department, $700,000, whatever it is. I do tend to, I do, I do tend to take a zero-based approach, it's kind of my, my background, what I've been taught. So I tend not to just look back what we asked for in this category and say, we asked for $6,000 last year, we're gonna ask for it this year. Now, I really try to, I try to assume and I try to project what our expenses are gonna be. And so you do see a little bit of a change kind of on a number of the different items, but I, but I did look back last five years of our expenses, and so where we may have asked for $7,000 for three straight years and only spent six, so it's likely I, I kind of brought that down to $6,000, for instance. So that's just generally my approach. Let's go to the next slide. Well, I think there are really two primary talking points from, from this budget. I don't know that you've seen a CNR project for a planning process in a little while. But, so proposing a tariffed planning process. This is one of this board's adopted goals. It's also a goal established in the 2017 Plan of Conservation and Development. So I've kind of planned a, kind of a three-year cycle on it, '24 through '26, $150,000 in total. I don't have a scope for you yet. I mean, we'll, we'll deal with kind of scope and planning, you know, as we go down the line. But, but essentially, it kind of breaks into a policy segment, so planning, you know, a community planning process, a neighborhood planning process, and then, and then an implementation piece in the third year. So if there's any zoning changes we need, any of those kinds of things to implement what we decided to do during the planning process.
George, can I ask, is, for three years, for a charrette, is, I was under the impression it's a shorter time period, and I was just curious with, you know, keeping engagement on the project over three years, is it possible to?
I think it is. I mean, sometimes I think, I think it's good to ask for three years, because you never know how it's gonna fall on the calendar, which, which, which can be a problem. But, you know, it probably breaks into, you know, $100,000 process for the, you know, the, 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 the planning process could be over a year to 16 months. You know, i- if you do it right and you take it slow and you have a good number of community input sessions, I mean, you know, more, well more than one, so kind of a series of those kinds of, kinds of events, particularly for, for a smaller community. You really wanna get in, you know, get in the weeds a little bit on, on what that community is looking for and what it needs. So, I mean, I think that's a conservative way, way to look at it, is to, is to plan it over three years and kind of ease, ease it over the budget cycle. I'm happy to take 150 upfront, sure, but, but I do think it's, but, but, but I wouldn't spend it all upfront.
The process is gonna take the same amount of time.
The process is gonna, you know, it's, it's gonna be a, certainly a 12-day, 18-month planning process, and then it's gonna be in at least another 12-month implementation process. So it probably does get you out to year three ultimately.
Okay, and this is, you know, I see it's called a planning process, but it's a charrette?
No, no, I don't, it might be. That's why I said, I don't, I don't think we've, I don't think we would be ready to define what the scope is. Maybe it's a charrette, maybe, maybe it's something different. Charrette has a specific expectation.
Right.
And it may or may not be the best approach for that community. I just, we just don't know it yet. It may be.
So how do you learn that from the community sessions?
Yeah, yeah, maybe, I mean, certainly it's gonna, I mean, it's not, I don't think I'm the decider of it. You know, the, your, your planning commission is typically your lead on land use policymaking, and your zoning commission is the lead on, on implementation. So we'll, we'll have that, we'll have that discussion and maybe, maybe we'll use the consulting process to kind of help us decide what the best process is.
But what determines what the best process? Like, what are certain factors that would determine that?
I mean, I, I think, I think it might be the goals, certainly the goals. A charrette typically comes with an output that is specific to design and specific to architecture and specific to those kinds of. That, that may be what we're looking for, or we may be just trying to define what the vision for, for, for the futures. What, what kind of place do we wanna encourage in the future? Is it a place that encourages more, what, different types of development? Is it residential? Do we wanna encourage commercial down there? So I think we'll just have to figure that out.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you.
I don't know if that's a great answer, but I just, it's kind of an unknown. I just, the last thing I would do, would want, want us all to do, say, it's going to be a charrette. And if that's not really the best, the best approach to what we're looking to do.
Does the funding, you know, laid out here, like, is a charrette more money? Or do we think, you know what I'm saying, that sounds like it might cost more?
It can be, it can be. Because usually, when you do a charrette, those consultants are in town for, for multiple days, multiple times, and it, and it, and it can elevate itself.
Okay, yes. Good to know.
Alright, so that's the CNR project. And then, the second item is, is a proposed service improvement. And the proposed service improvement is to, is to make the deputy building official a full-time position, if you recall, that has been a shared services position. It's been a shared, it's been a shared position with our, with our friends in Bloomfield. Essentially, a three-day in Simsbury and a two-day in Bloomfield. Bloomfield elected not to, not to extend that, that agreement, but that may be to our benefit, in my opinion. And that is, we have a level of inspection activity, I think, that warrants two full-time inspectors. We're really only gonna need, we've also used part-time inspectors in the budget, and so really, we're, we've kind of taken all that down to just emergency fill-in numbers. The net increase for that is $20,488. I think there may be some revenue opportunities with, with other neighbors, Granby and Avon, and Henry's already begun some of those discussions to maybe get a little bit, some of that back, because building inspectors are very difficult to get. Took us over six months, we made four different offers to four different individuals, and the final one worked out, Tim Gothers joined us in the fall from East Hartford, he's been fabulous. And the next slide, please. And then just, not to hit you with a litany of, of additional justifications, but obviously, I think it's a good idea, but we do, we do anticipate increased inspection demand for projects we have been alerted to, as well as projects that are in pipeline, in the pipeline. That means projects that have been approved but haven't gone to construction yet. You know, it could be, you know, we anticipate a Barbara Code, for instance, which is gonna be a significant development project and require a good deal of inspection services. And we also extend, we also anticipate the, the second piece of the Hartford site coming in for entitlements, and that will also be a significant development project, and we're gonna need two to do that. On average, just, just in terms of data, we, we do about 2,700 building inspections a year, which is a lot. If you compare it to some of our, 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 our peer towns who have similar inspection numbers like Rocky Hill or Newington and Enfield, they do it with more inspectors. And then finally, I would just add, you know, we'd have to think about succession planning in this department. And it'll allow the, the, the two inspectors more time to do the other things that they're supposed to be doing. Spending more time on complex review, getting their mandatory training in. It's been difficult to accomplish that over the last year and a half to two years. And then there are other things we want to do as part of the department. We wanna do some, you know, community-wide program for builders and citizens on the building development process. You know, Henry informs me that there's been a ton of changes in, in, in the state building codes that we want, we haven't had an opportunity to do education on. So that's, 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 that's the reason for the proposed service approval.
So it's basically.
Happy to answer questions?
Guy that's here adding time to his.
That's right. That's exactly what, yes, yes.
And you like me.
Yes, I think he's good. I think he's a really good fit to the, to the team, and he's got a very good disposition. I think he fits in our, with our town.
Would you ever, so assuming you had a seasoned, you know, seasoned staff members for, for inspection, would you ever hire a person who didn't have experience?
Well, I mean, the straight, the straight answer is no, and I'll tell you why, is because, because they have to have the state building inspector's license.
Well, okay, assuming someone comes accredited and able to do the job. I'm not, like, don't hire me. I'm saying, you know.
You might should hire his friend.
Yes, is the, is the answer. Of course we would. If we had time for the tutelage and the training and the, but ultimately, even with two, we certainly don't have that time to do.
So, George, is that service improvement in the budget, or is it outside and we need to add it back in?
It's.
It's an ask.
It's a good question.
It's outside.
So when I look at this on page 100, there's the 12, 273, and then we add the 20 to the 12, 273 for the bill. 12, 273 for the building, full-time building department number? Or am I?
I'm not sure what you're, tell me what you're.
Trying to figure out the math. Is it, is some of them, is some of that salary, is half of it, so?
Yeah, I don't see the number in your, your budget.
None of the part-time numbers coming down, right?
No, so it's in, I mean, it's, it's, it's in the full-time number.
So it's a 20 increase, so it'd be 32, 273 would be the number. I'm really asking Amy, George.
Yeah, I know you are.
Right. It would get added to the 271, 632, right?
But what I'm asking is, does the, but does the 26, 6 come down? Where's the part, where, where's, where's the other half of this guy's salary now?
So, no, the 26, 6, it's for the secretaries in the department.
So where is this, so the salary is already in full-time?
Yeah, I think it's in because we, we.
Right, a portion of it is. So compared to last year, it is the service improvement part is on.
Yeah.
So let me ask this a different way. Are we taking the full salary and then Bloomfield is paying us, so it's showing as a revenue item?
That's how it was working.
That's how it was working.
That's right.
So we already have his salary in the 271.
But, but for the percentage that he's performing now, not the, no, we have the?
You're saying that it's not netted, the, the, the offsetting revenue from Bloomfield isn't being netted in here? We're showing?
Oh, you're asking if it's gross in here?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's gross in here.
It already is. It's gross. So there is not a $20,000 increase.
No, there's just a revenue.
We're just losing the revenue.
Revenue and profit.
That's what I'm getting at.
So the ask that you're asking for is reflected in this? Yeah, okay.
It's just we're losing the corresponding revenue.
Right.
Thank you. I think it was like 38,000.
So that 473 stands. Okay, that helps, sorry.
And that would be why it's listed as a full F T E, because it's?
I mean, it's pretty clean budget, folks. Back in, it's for another plan next year to do other things, some more things. It's pretty clean. Interviews tomorrow, more interviews tomorrow. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
You too.
Anybody told George as soon as they leave, we start cutting their budgets?
That's why, is that why it's the last one?
So to burst, it was years ago where department heads wouldn't leave because we had to start making changes. So from then on, department heads always stayed. I'm just messing. Yeah, you're good. Like Tom Flavers, he comes in and presents, he won't leave. Because I think we messed up his budget one year.
Hi.
Hi.
How are you?
Good.
I kept it easy.
Yeah, yeah, it was, last year was complicated.
Yeah, yeah, not, not asking anything. So like many of the budgets that you've seen tonight, it's pretty straightforward. Our increases are just our natural increases that we prefer. Overall, our budget has a 2.3% increase. And the main drivers behind that, we have administration increases, salaries for our service staff, and then we've got a 2.2%, 2.28% increase in your center for staffing. And then we have an increase in our transportation services, which is contractual with our service provider. And we also, in our budget, this is our first full year in our new food pantry space. We love it. It's working out so well. If anyone hasn't been to Cheese Day yet, I invite you to come. We'd love to have all of you. We are spending 3850 annually for our lease cost. And that includes the cost of the lease, as well as a small amount of money that we provide to the church for snow removal, which I guess we're going to need again this weekend. And that is fully offset by trust funds. So you'd see that in our, in our line item. There is a 2670 increase to the dialer ride program, which I had already said, and that's reflective of our contractual increase. There is offsetting grant revenue from the state for our dialer ride program, and that's in the amount of 4720. We haven't been made aware that there would be any changes or increases this year, so we're using the same numbers as last year. And again, you'll see that in our offsetting grant revenue. There is a small increase, $300, in our senior center part-time salary. That's due to the minimum wage. Our senior center has two part-time staff persons that manage our twice-a-week meal service. And our last highlight is that the full cost for our senior lunch program, there is offsetting revenue from the Belden Trust Fund, and that helps to pay for our salaries for our staff on Wednesdays for the lunch.
Kristen, how many people are participating on a weekly basis in the lunch programs these days?
It's actually interesting that you bring that up because we had a significant dip in our Tuesday lunch program. Tuesday is our cafe lunch where we have a soup and sandwich, $2 for the soup, $2 for the sandwich. And we were starting to think, hmm, is this program something that's still viable? We were kind of getting to the point where we were spending a little bit more on salary than we were in, for the amount of people that were actually enjoying the food. But what happened recently is we were awarded a grant again for the second year in a row to provide the Taiji Kwan classes to our seniors, which is a balance program, which ties into a new fall prevention committee that we've been working on. And the folks from that exercise class now come to the Tuesday lunch. And we've been selling out of soups and sandwiches. We ran out of sandwiches this week. So we're doing around, I'd say for Tuesday lunches, around 25. And then our Wednesday lunch, we're pretty much back up to almost pre-pandemic numbers, or probably, I'd say, an average, at least 40. And then we also, which isn't in here because it's not, there's not additional staff to provide it, we also provide a Monday night supper once a month. And we usually have at least 40 people for that as well. This past Monday, we had corned beef and cabbage, so that's really nice.
How, when you look at those, across those days, how many of those are, are the same faces? This is a good thing. Or, you know, do some, do we have people moving in and out? They, they stay, they stay still maybe regular visitors and guests?
Sure.
But are they just sort of on their own rotation?
Um, I'd say for Tuesday, it's a little bit more on their own rotation. That's because it's more of like a drop-in. And it's not a sit-down meal service, although if people would like to stay and eat there, they're very welcome to. The Wednesday lunch tends to be more of the same, the same people, the same people that come every week consistently. And that group, we also have quite a few people that come from our intonations group, which is our senior center choir. And they help to keep our numbers healthy as well.
And then the dinner, is the dinner the same, some, many of the same faces from lunch? Or is it a different crowd?
Many of the same faces from lunch. And the dinners are the best, especially the one that I cook back.
Well, corned beef and cabbage.
So forgive me, I got to ask, we've got 4,000 miles of travel reimbursement?
So we increased the travel reimbursement because we, well, two things. We have more staff and we also had to increase for the cost of the gasoline, which is a lot, the mileage reimbursement is a lot higher now. And just taking a look through the budget and having realized that some of our staff were not utilizing their ability to be reimbursed and now really encouraging them that they should be, you know, completing their mileage reimbursements. And we felt that this number would be closer to the complement of seven staff that I have that.
So help me out, like what's an example of mileage reimbursement for staff? So they're obviously not, not to and from work, but once they're at town or going out seeing clients?
Sure, yep. So I'll use myself for an example. I'm, I'm probably one of the lower ones for mileage reimbursement. I'm also one of the worst ones for doing my paperwork to get my reimbursement.
I get it.
But for me, it would be meeting state marshals to go out to evictions, home visits for someone like Rachel, it's running back and forth to the food pantry.
Gotcha.
Things like that.
Yeah, so five miles here, eight miles there, every day, a couple trips. That adds up plus for seven staff. That makes sense. Thank you.
Like last week, we went out to the health district for a meeting. So like that, things like that.
Totally makes sense. Thank you.
You're welcome. Is that the hardest question?
Well, you're not, you're not, you're not asking for three social workers.
I was just going to say, you're paying $20,000 this year.
So.
Go ahead, Chris.
No, 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 no.
I was just wondering actually if you have any preliminary data on our new youth and family social worker and?
Sure. I didn't bring anything, but I certainly could put something together and get that to you based on the programs that she's done so far.
That'd be great.
But she's really fantastic. I don't know if you've all had an opportunity to meet her, but she's just really great. She's hit the ground running. She's already done a lot of really great collaboration with the library. She's been going over there for programs. We've had a lot of programs in our building. We had a program last night at the library with Community for Care. And just if I can share a quick story with you, it's more of an anecdotal, not a data journey. But she started in October and one of the first things that she did, we got a call about a young woman who was 19 and was homeless. And she was sleeping in a basement. And I had asked her to start working with this young woman. And before Christmas, she was able to successfully help this young woman get a lease, get a roommate, and get into an apartment. So I think she's done pretty good work so far.
Good one.
Yeah.
So we, we, I know we funded two years last year, right? So we're only, we're on our second year.
Well, she, I think it's, it's not fiscally, it's based on when she started, right? So she just started in October. So we're only just about six months in with her.
I mean, but the funding is fiscally because it's gone.
Right, so I don't know.
Yeah, the money's gone. So we don't get to continue the appropriation.
So, yeah, so this will be year two, the next fiscal. So hoping that we can come back next year and see if she needs to stay.
So that's, that was leading to my question. When's your big next staff add?
Next year.
Besides that one?
Next year, just to keep, to keep her.
Okay. And what about on top of that? I mean, that's, I mean, because that's, that person right now is, is building, is built into what the service needs that you're seeing currently. But you must be thinking about what's your two, four, five year out? I mean, again, are you, or are you where you need to be, do you think?
I think it's hard to say because since I've been here, I've been truly blessed by this board and the previous board to already have had on another social worker. So I've got the two new ones and I think I'm in a pretty healthy spot right now. I think that the next big ask will absolutely be to keep this new position. I think we're going to be able to show you some really good work and some good numbers. So I don't think to stretch beyond that. And I think if we stretched beyond that to continue to meet the needs of the community as they grow, the next thing I'm going to have to do is to ask you for a new community center because we're out of room. So that would be my next big ask.
It's not even, it's not on the C I P anymore. Gone.
Get your graph out. Get your chart out, your debt chart.
More of a, curious. With all of the programs that you offer, how many people would you say, you know, are sort of in and out throughout the year, through the senior center? And all of these programs that you listed, there are certain ones that are incredibly popular, like what would you say are, when you look at like ceramics and brick and dentures? Kind of curious.
Oh, for senior center programming? The lunches, of course, are very popular. The fitness programming is very well-attended and popular. Bingo is, is a big one. And.
What night's bingo?
And the, the art classes are really well-attended as well.
And concerts.
That's true too. Yes, the holiday programs are very well-attended.
I, I, so I used to be a pretty religious volunteer for, at the food share, Monday food share distribution down at First Church. And then COVID hit and then I, I said, I.
The food share truck.
I mean, I indicted myself that that's a poor excuse. But curious for not going back and re-engaging. Curious, the, the clients of that event, do you find that they're also your, our other, the clients in our other, our programs as well?
So.
Or is that a different crew? You know, different, different cohort?
I actually can't answer that entirely.
Okay, curious, just.
But I can tell you that it is one of Rachel's to-dos. And she, we thought about this last summer and then she was out for a while with her maternity leave, is to go and be present at the mobile food share distribution. We want to get out there and meet those people and give them our flyer for our food programs because I suspect that there are people that are there that might not know that we are here.
It was, I see, I mean, I can recall seeing families, right? And we keep on thinking of the programs that we're talking about for seniors and there's, so it's like, do these people even, are they aware that can avail themselves of services in town potentially that they?
Absolutely. That's a goal of ours, is to get out there and make sure that they know that we're here.
I was just going to say, one thing I would say, having volunteered at both, is that in order to participate in some of the social services, especially I believe the food pantry program, you are registered. These are clients and, and they're checking in to, to go to the food share truck, you can just come. So, so there, I think there is, Chris, some crossover, but I also think there could be a little bit of difference too, because it's not anything you have to register for.
It's also not town-specific, the mobile food share.
It's not. You definitely see people coming in.
And we, we encourage that. We, in our, in our office, we have a listing of, we provide people the schedule for Simsbury, Grand B and Avon, and we encourage them to, to cross the line. And if you, if you maneuver it correctly, you can get food every week of the month. So, and, and people do do that.
You're brilliant. Thank you.
Are you going to talk about the capital item, even the C N R item, even though it's the trust paid for it?
Yeah, I certainly can. I don't have my page on it, so forgive me for not.
Is that supposed to be Saturday to talk about?
It's Friday and Saturday. I won't be here, but I can share with you that what we would like to do is, we have a craft room, which is on the lower level of Eno Hall. It's a great space, but it's pretty worn. It's been a craft room for a while. The tables are old, they're pretty dirty. And to store our ceramic crafts and our bottles of paint, it's just metal shelving. So it's not a really user-friendly space for anything other than crafting. What we would like to do is, we have that room. We want to get some new tables that are nice so that, our intention is that that room can now be a multipurpose room. Tables that are usable for meetings and for groups other than ceramics, purchasing cabinets that are closed so the paints and the ceramics can be put away and not out in eyesight. And for that, we're proposing to use Gellerd funding. That's a, a trust donation that was made to us many, many years ago. And it was meant to improve, make improvements to Eno and to the senior center. And I, I know, I don't have the full history, I apologize. But I believe back when the new senior center was on the table, that money was being earmarked for that possibility. I still hope that that happens before I retire, to get a new senior center, a community center. But we thought that it would be a really great opportunity to take some of that funding and really make that room more usable and more multipurpose.
How much is in that fund?
I think it's around like 75, I want to say, do you know, Amy? I think it's in the Gellerd fund. I think it's about 75.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Kristen.
Okay, thank you.
You feeling better?
Yes, sir. Thank you. I had to, I need to do the traffic.
Oh.
Mmm.
Okay.
So does anybody have anything else? Because we are at the end of our agenda for this mini-workshop.
Is there anybody we can call to have come through?
No, I know, because I'm off here.
Take care of Saturday.
Chip away on our Saturday. I know, it's kind of like in here, like in your chest and you're getting mentally into it, so. Oh, wow. Okay.
It's faster than what I remembered last year.
Huh?
It's faster than I remembered last year.
The, the night one?
I thought so.
I thought it went more.
I caught all the fluff on the PowerPoints.